All the meeting order. Or we want to do the pledge first.
No, we'll take both and then one of the fledge. And so Chair Valdes, Vice Chair Corrigan.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ye and Commissioner Morris. Here. We have five, we can begin.
Great. Now, fledge. Uh, Jen, I'd like to link the fledge. You can leave the pledge?
Yeah.
Oh, go.
Um, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, um, well, if other than the public comments not on the agenda.
We have two public comments for items not on the agenda.
Uh, I read through, oh, no, that's right, but it has to be present.
There, by the way. How long would you like to give the speakers?
We need to speak for three.
And the first one will be Jim.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, I'm Jim Wainell, Level, Bennington Road. The, I'm here tonight to ask you for a future agenda item to, uh, basically, there are two sheds that have been, they're about to fall down in Redwood Grove, and I would like to have those two sheds bundled with the caretaker removal and had those sheds taken completely out. They really haven't been used by anybody for many, many years. Maybe twenty years or something like that. Grassroots, actuarialists like grassroots, all their tools are small and they keep them in the caretaker house. And of course, the caretaker house, CIP, builds another storage building, basically. So therefore, they, they will be covered once that project is done. Now, these sheds are located in a site that is perfect for restoration because irrigation water is probably within twenty feet of where they are. So, and would be, it's right along the main pathway, people pass by it all the time. Also, there's a tree that overhangs one of the sheds. It's been dead for seven years and, uh, well, it's going to take out a shed in probably the next good windstorm we get. And so that tree should also kind of be removed. So this is basically a request to clean up Redwood Grove and make it more of a nature center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second public speaker is Alice.
Well, I'd like to pass speaker, I'd like to have something put on your next agenda, specifically reviewing of the landscape and hardscape that's already been permitted for the Los Altos Use Center conversion to city offices with one small conference room for the public.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the, the last part of what you said. It's kind of hard for the sound to carry here.
I'd like to have you add to your agenda item to discuss the hardscape that is already being built and ground cleared for the Los Altos Use Center conversion. Specifically, there's at least two, if not three, large round fenced things that are being put up to surround HVAC and maybe some new patio, as well as a new ground plane fence around the new generator by the oak trees, the protected oak trees that were taken out protected because of the size. I understand that according to one of the staffers, consultants, or many of us, that your committee does not review any of that. However, I did see the hardscape plans. I went to City Hall last week. They initially said to me I couldn't see them because they were copyrighted. They were secret. They hadn't gone to any of the commissions because that's not the purview of your commission, the historic or the environmental, because that's not your task. Apparently, there's some magic area on the civic center where you don't get to see stuff until after ground is broken. So I'm concerned about this. Last Friday, I noticed one of your listed art projects, the Australian dogs, had a little, um, construction vehicle right next to it with no protection around it. There's also the playground, this kind of stuff with some artwork coming to do with the apricot theme. And in addition, there's been several, I would call it taking the apricot signs by city hall, staffers and consultants and various people, without going through any of your committees such as, I love them, the Friends Library sheds when they initially wanted to try to get space in the Los Altos Use Center. They had to go to the police area. And then there was a little patio added outside City Hall front door with a flower area last summer that didn't go through any community discussion. And I would say that's park and open space. Maybe it's not officially parks, but I would say maybe cultural and artistic, that's part of your purview. Um, so, I'm particularly worried about this grave that I think I've located it under an oak tree that was taken out a couple months ago. And I'm getting more information on that. But meanwhile, I posted on Find a Grave of J Gilbert Smith and a picture that shows people, the oak tree cluster by the old Los Altos Elementary where I think his mother was buried, whole body burial now. I haven't yet found out she has any Native American blood, if she did, that's a very interesting issue. Uh, in addition, for those who may not be aware of Ginny Whipple, who gave $2.89 to the county and Los Altos libraries.
Alice, sorry, your time just extends.
Anyway, here's pictures here, I pass that on.
I have a clarifying question.
Does anybody have any, oh, clarifying questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Yes.
Well, what's the ask?
The ask is to put on your agenda to review the copyrighted plans that you have to give a request to the clerk if you remember the public, and it has to get it secret. It's copyrighted, so the architect won't give it unless they sign a release, according to somebody at City Hall I talked to. But I think you guys can get it. There are hardscapes and fences that are being added, and I would think that that falls under your cultural and arts function, if not also your parks function.
Thank you.
Clarifying question.
As well as the, the EOC generator.
Okay, so, not including the last comment you made, the prior comment, the site you're talking about is the orchard? Pardon? The site you're talking about is.
I'm talking about basically all encroachments into the historic orchard under the state historic designation, not the map that the city has, which they like to say they're inconsistent maps and they have total discretion decide what the historic map is. But the historic map is what the state government has.
I just wanted to make sure that that's the area you're talking about. You're not talking about the police area. You're not talking about the community center.
Well, the police, the police area where the front of library sheds are, where there are trees behind a fence, a security fence for the police, that area is on the state historic map. But the City Hall doesn't like to use that map because they like to say their inconsistencies may have total discretion to say whatever the historic orchard is. So for example, they took out a bunch of historic trees and other planting sites where they didn't allow irrigation to be installed last winter in order to have space for HVAC, AC, and other things with another plain brown fence corral on the side of the old Lacy facing library.
Perfect.
Yeah. So I just ask you to get involved and have a look at the plans because right now I have to submit a public records request. They have ten days to reply to me. That doesn't mean give it to me. They've already indicated to me, they're going to have to ask the architect to sign a copyright release, so it could be a month or more before I get it.
Got it.
But I think you guys can get it by your next meeting. I think you should look.
I have a question. So, um, so are these plans that the city is going to use? So, so.
They've already broken ground.
So, and that, so the city has some ownership interest in these copyrighted plans?
Yeah, I think so. But they would only let me look at them on a computer. They wouldn't let me take pictures of it, wouldn't print them out. I could sit there and make a sketch.
Who, who told you that?
That was Mr. Zorn, the Assistant City Manager.
Okay.
I had a big long talk with him on Friday. Because I came up to the town and saying, I'd like to see these Lacy conversion plans and what is the footprint, what are anything for hardscape around it, and what is the layout of the interior?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I think you should, should ask. But he says you have no purview to discuss any of that because City Hall has total rights to do all design, even, you know, the day they broke ground. It's kind of interesting. I had no idea that City Hall had grabbed so much authority. But please, I noticed there is no construction equipment next to the Australian cattle dog right now, so it's safe for the moment, but there's no protection around it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's for the record.
Other questions?
Moving on, I'll be for consideration, item number one, the minutes. Does anybody have any concerns with the minutes, or would somebody like to move to approve?
Almost do approve, do you have a second?
I'll second. Great.
Commissioner Ye?
I abstain. If I wasn't here.
Uh, Commissioner Moore?
Yeah.
Commissioner Corrigan?
Um, my, I interject, you don't have to abstain, you could actually take the vote, you can vote after.
I thought, I didn't know she was going to abstain, but now, yeah.
You're, you're welcome to vote after, you're still welcome to abstain.
We're not going to pass them. I'll, I'll vote yes, now, so we can pass it.
Commissioner Corrigan? Chair Valdes?
Yes.
And Commissioner Morris?
Yeah.
That passes unanimously.
Great. Moving on to item two, excuse me. Discuss a selected theme for upcoming community center calls for art. They had asked every commissioner to come with up to three, one, two, or three items, I mean, themes, potential themes, put them on the table, and then we would discuss, um, what, what the final theme should be for the next call for art. Before we do that, I want to make sure we, by the, uh, it'll run between August 24th and January 25th. The question I have for staff is, uh, when would the call for art actually go out?
As soon as we get a theme.
Yeah, and so, those dates, those dates are approximate, so.
Those dates are.
Approximate, so, just, I mean, I don't know that we're going to hang it on that date. But, uh, but yeah, as soon as we get a theme, we'll put that together, send it out, try to select the artists, and then get that as soon as we can back to the commission because the commission select, as a whole selects them, so.
Great. And there was no other report that you had?
No, we're just looking for, uh, Commissioner Couture actually submitted her, so we have those.
Commissioner?
Jerry Couture.
She did, great, um, so, can you, um, can, do we have the ability to like write them up on the screen, or should I just take, take notes?
Um, we can write them, I can just, I'll just get a word out here.
Read a list. Why don't you start with Commissioner Corrigan's ideas?
We'll make that bigger, hold on one second.
What's, I am Los Altos.
She said, I'm sorry, I didn't, she'll be here.
Community center, um.
I am, I just wonder what's, what's on the.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay, um, I'll just randomly go this way.
Oh, okay, Commissioner Moore?
Sure. Um, out and about, daydreaming, and, um, well, I have a full bunch, meandering, of course I do, right?
Right.
Um, let's get me, got it? But I, I did some research and just went back and looked at the last four calls for art, so I thought I'd just refresh everyone's memory. So, uh, in August of 2022, the topic was where I'm from. That was followed by every child is an artist, which was followed by moments in time, which was then followed by what we currently have, which is what does winter mean to me? And so my three suggestions are focused on Los Altos because I thought we should talk about Los Altos. And then the other four preceding calls for art didn't have that kind of theme. So, um, so what I have is what makes Los Altos a great place to live and work? What makes Los Altos a wonderful community? When I think of Los Altos, I think of.
Um, life in Los Altos, reflections, and, and then I put local, but maybe we should put Los Altos heroes and leaders. I have one more, but I know ours is just your three. My other one kind of ties them with reflections, it's perspectives. I could decide which one.
I do, uh, sports, technology.
Well, hi, Thomas Hill.
I've never seen that version.
It's going to be more interesting.
Alright, see?
Okay, minor, um, I'll eat it. A preponderance of purple. I wanted to see what artists can do with a color.
Yes.
Preponderance of purple. The masters reinterpreted. I know we're not supposed to use the word masters anymore, so we may have to change that.
Why can't we use that?
Whole other conversation.
What do you call them, that, old, old dead people?
Um, and the last one, light and dark. Light and dark. Great arrangement there, we can see everybody. So now I will ask each, um, person, you have the option, you don't have to, kind of just talk about your choices a little bit to express the rest of what your thing to them. So same order again.
Well, one thing I thought about is this, um, these spans of time that were running these shows are, they, they overlap a lot of like seasons and events and, you know, life happening. So I was trying to think of something that was going to be somewhat neutral, that didn't lock us into like a theme of, you know, fall, winter, spring, summer, kind of a thing. So I was trying to kind of step out of that. And I was also trying to think of like what would give us great variety. And so, um, although I will say out and about, it was, I mean, it could be out and about in Los Altos if we want to tie it down to that, but about like travel and activities and that sort of thing. So that's what I was thinking of, daydreaming, I thought would be interesting just to see what artists come up with, just allowing their brains to just go where they want to go. And then meandering, again, it's a little bit of that, like, it's a wider lens of being able to look at, um, a variety of topics and, and where artists' brains go and what they, you know, are thinking as they're traveling through.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Moore? You already kind of explained it, if you want to add anything else, or you feel.
I don't think so, I, yeah, I don't think so, thank you though.
Okay, great, um, Commissioner Moore?
I think that are pretty self-explanatory. I mean, life in Los Altos is, you know, what your life is like in Los Altos, what is, what makes that unique. Reflections and perspectives, I mean, this is pretty broad, but, um, it, it can relate to your experience living here. And then Los Altos heroes and leaders, I just thought it might be nice to spotlight maybe different like civic members or, um, I imagine kids might do like their parents or something. Hint, hint, even in telling me, my son, no, just kidding. Um, yeah.
And you know, just any, anything you want to say about yours?
I just pick topics that kids might like. You know, like that tends to be, you want to get kids into art, adults can go to the museums if they feel like if a kid's sending out.
Um, for mine, the preponderance of purple was a spin on, um, I went to an exhibition at a friend's city. I went to visit a friend in preparation for a reunion and it took us to a small, um, it wasn't a community center, it was kind of like an outpost of a community center. That's where they did their art exhibitions. And then they, they did this, um, it was a colored theme, um, art exhibition, and it also had sculptures, so it wasn't just hand con art. But the, the title of it was what rhymes with orange? And everything was, anything you could think of was orange. And it's, it's kind of a poet's joke, it's because there are not very many words that rhyme with orange. But, um, I just was fascinated that what people could do with a color that it kind of blew my mind. It, it wasn't just a sea of orange, it was really creative. And so I personally like purple, and you don't see it too often in art unless it's, um, faux vist or that kind of art. So I just made an alliteration of preponderance of purple. I thought it might be cool to see what artists can do with purple. The masters reinterpreted in, you know, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of art discussion these days where people, you know, Kehinde Wiley does it, he's reinterpreted, um, you know, Eurocentric art into contemporary Black America. But there are other artists that have, have attempted, um, you know, to reinterpret art that everybody knows. And so I just thought it might be interesting to throw that out to local artists or, um, oh, I had a technical question because I, again, when we've done this, it's only our second time that I've been involved in this. When you guys send out the calls to art, you send out mass, a massive net? Or can you focus, say, on Los Altos when you call for art?
Just an example. It's on.
You're talking about Cafe, it's on Cafe, that's where it is. So the only restrictions would be what we say they are.
Okay.
So if we say it needs, so the last, as an example, the last call for art was the Greater Bay Area.
Yeah, okay, great. And still the town crier and then, um, and then next door, we've done that in the past.
Yeah.
So anyways, the, the thing about, this was kind of taking classic paintings or, or photographic art, whatever, it doesn't matter, and just reinterpreting them into something, whether it's related to Los Altos or related to a local's experience, whatever. And then light and dark was, um, pretty much that. It's, um, art, a lot of artists like to explore the theme of light and dark, whether it's color, whether it's literal shadow and brightness, or whether it's, um, a difficult theme, you know, happiness and unhappiness or things like that. So I thought it might be a provocative, uh, thing to do, to see what people would do. So that's where I was coming from with mine. Okay. We can, we can narrow this down in lots of ways. We can, um, you know, everybody can like pick, take the whole list and pick three or four, uh, or do, do any kind of jump out? Does anybody want to throw some ideas out in terms of narrowing this list?
I have to say, I liked mine, but I like Jenna's, Commissioner Moore's better. I like life in Los Altos, because that could be anything. That could be sports, it could be technology, it could be dogs. And you could interpret it anywhere you want, it could be the farmer's market. So, I don't know, I thought that was really broad and a good idea. Are we trying to make it Los Altos focused?
Well, I, you know, I, I don't have a preference. I think it would be very interesting because the last call wasn't. And so, you know, it might be fun to do that, I think so. I wouldn't, I mean, does anybody have an objection to doing that? Think it might be interesting to, to focus it down on Los Altos? Or at least, you know, the, this area? Um, do we, if we use Cafe though, so for example, if we wanted to invite residents to submit their art, how would we do that?
Was it open to residents?
Or we, we just say that?
One of the requirements or one of the qualifications is your resident, if that's what you want to do.
Resident or.
But remember, the more restrictions you put on it and the more space that you restrict it to, um, the less you're going to get.
Well, you're, I also reached out to all the schools, all the principals, and asked, oh, for every child is an artist.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and they put it in their school newsletter.
And even like workers.
We had a lot of submissions, yeah.
There might be workers that work here, they have their perspective of Los Altos.
I, I really like life in Los Altos. I, I also, I'm really, I'm really into the preponderance of purple, but that is a very narrow focus. I just was so fascinated by that orange exhibition, I thought this.
I have a question, because I'm not, I wasn't part of your guys' arts commission. When you guys did it before and you did a theme, don't artists just submit whatever they have already made? And then they, that's close enough?
No.
Okay, they would actually do the wrong, okay.
Yeah, especially the kid.
Okay, well, no, I mean, sorry, the ones that are like outside right now?
The, the call for art for sculptures.
Okay.
It's art without walls. Yeah, but, but you're right, then we accept whatever they.
Yeah, because if your artist doesn't live here, you're not going to have anything.
Exactly. This is a little different, because it's, it's for indoors and it's not a sculpture and all that.
I mean, I personally like the idea of keeping it most exclusive to Los Altos residents because I think that it's a, it's a great way to like honor our city and it's in our community center. Um.
I'm good with that.
Just make it simple. It's also a draw because if people are artists and they have their work posted here, they're going to kind of the community center to see it, so.
I agree. I agree. Well, I'm kind of hearing some consensus. Anybody want to pitch for anything else harder than that?
I really liked, like, light and dark. And, and there were, I liked spots from Los Altos technology, the daydreaming. When I think of Los Altos, I think of, and then light and dark. And so I was thinking if, I mean, we could do light and dark Los Altos or something like that, if we wanted to. But I'm okay, I'm okay with what you've been talking about too. I just love that contrast, and it's interesting to see what artists do.
I'm, I'm struck by the, of the Los Alt, the explicit Los Altos ones up there. We, we could probably turn most of them into a Los Altos thing, but of the ones that already say Los Altos, I'm more leaning towards the life in Los Altos. And when I think of Los Altos, I think of, because we're not telling people what to think of Los Altos. They get to tell us, so like, don't tell us that it's a wonderful community. Maybe you don't think it's a wonderful community, and you want to talk about that. So I like the, the last one on the left and the top one on the right. If we're just really going to keep it broad but focused on Los Altos, um, I think those both work. The other alternative is to take some of the others and, and then add the prepositional phrase, you know, in Los Altos. You know, meandering in Los Altos or daydreaming in Los Altos. Um, I really am, I'm jazzed by doing something focused on Los Altos, by Los Altos. And we have some really cool artists in Los Altos. And we have completely inexperienced artists in Los Altos, and I want to see both kinds of work here, kids, old people, everybody. So, um, maybe just keep it at life in Los Altos?
Sure.
I'm fine with whatever. Or when I think of Los Altos, I think of. Well, I know I suggested it, but out and about in Los Altos?
Yeah.
I mean, that kind of takes us. Out and about in Los Altos, how about that? Yeah? I like it too. I'm pretty open, I'm pretty open. Out and about in Los Altos?
We can vote.
No, no, inclusive of people, don't go outside.
Oh, the people that what?
Don't go outside.
Well, that's true, I mean, you, yeah. Well, let's put it this way, out can mean a number of things. So, all right, let, let's, um, if, if we said we're going to choose between when I think of Los Altos, I think of dot, 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 or life in Los Altos, um.
Should we pick those three and then vote?
Yeah, let's do that, let's narrow it down to those three.
Out and about.
Out and about.
And then life in Los Altos? And what I think of, I think that's right.
And then when I think of. And then life in Los Altos? And then life in Los Altos? How many people vote for the top one?
Were you saying one day?
Yeah. Top one? Uh, second one?
Oh, is the second one, when I think of Los Altos, I think of, okay.
Do one hand go up? One hand?
Two hands.
Life in Los Altos?
So then I'm the tiebreaker.
You already voted, didn't you?
I know, but I can break the tie, because mine's got nothing but me.
Okay.
I thought you voted for the first one.
I did.
Okay.
So now, so now we're eliminating that one, and we've got two.
So now.
We have two.
Okay, so now who votes for the top one? When I think of Los Altos, I think of.
They voted for that.
Vote again. Well, you can change your vote if you want to. I'm voting for the bottom one, life in Los Altos. So there. So there, I mean, so there it is. I didn't mean it like so there, I meant it's like, so I'm done.
Life in Los Altos.
Okay.
All right, so one question I have, um, being that this is Los Altos focused and this will be towards the. The former arts commissioners, being that it's, uh, specific to Los Altos, I don't know that artists will have art prepped. For Los Altos, so it may take them more time. Do we wanna give them more time? Uh, and maybe not do this till September's meeting? I mean, we can put this up soon, once we figure out how we're gonna promote it on Cafe. I'm just saying, given that they'll have July to, so July and some of August to submit. The plan was to bring those proposals back to you in August, have a cutoff deadline in the beginning of August to bring it back. Do we wanna push that to September?
Actually, I think that's a good idea too with the schools.
Yeah.
That's my other thing. Even if we do it in September, it's just gonna catch the very beginning of school, so.
But they don't like. Yeah. But I like the idea of pushing to September.
Bring it back to the commission in September. Okay, that's, I'm gonna figure that out.
Every child is an artist, we push it to October, just FYI.
Yeah, and I think schools start in at the latest mid-August now, right? So they'll have a full month, but that's about it.
But the kids will do the, they can paint and or whatever they wanna do in the summer, right?
We have to get the members going.
The other thing too, is I don't know, there's a lot of kids surfing Cafe, so we might wanna get the word out to them, and the best way to do that is through the schools. I don't know how much is necessary after we notify them. Just a, just a thought.
Do you wanna talk about how we would publicize this?
Um, well, we publicize it in our activity guide for one thing, um.
And then probably flyers to our usual places that we'd take flyer that are.
And with the flyers, we can post those at next door.
And then, yeah, if the commission could get involved in that too.
Can't the schools send push emails during summer? I mean, they do for other things.
Um, that's up to the schools, but I know we we had kind of, they're they're gonna separate each of us from.
Okay, so we're gonna push it to September? Okay.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Of Manny, so, um, the social media, next door, Facebook, Instagram, right? Okay, okay, thanks.
I'm gonna wait, we're not gonna advertise it just yet, right?
Yeah, let us put this together and we'll see, and that's something that I can probably just, uh, send to the commission. Um, we would be able to discuss it or take any feedback individually, um, but if there is an issue with it, then we can actually bring the advertisement. To the next commission meeting, which would be really late though, so, um, so I could send it out. I think we can probably put something together, staff ones. And then just notify you, this is what we've got prepared. If there's an issue with it, we'll hold it up.
Flyers in the lobby? Will we put flyers up in the lobby maybe? Okay, good, thank you.
All right, so, um, barring any other questions or comments, I think. Just a Hillview permanent dog park conceptual design handed back to.
So, um, thank you, uh, for, um, being present for this. This is a, a kind of a, a big. Um, project that's coming up for our parks, um, as, uh, you'll see, we have a presentation. That will take us from where we were and our architect with Verde Design is here, Todd Young. Um, so he will do, he will work with the, with me, he'll do most of the presentation, and I'll, I'll work with him actually. Um, to to interject on a few areas, but for the most part, uh, we're gonna take you from where we were to where we are now. Um, and show you a couple of conceptual designs that we've finalized. Um, also addressing the parking, um, changes that have been proposed, and actually, these parking changes, uh, proposed parking changes. Were actually given, uh, presented to the library commission in January too. So if you wanna see their comments, you're welcome. It's the January fourth meeting that they were at. So that's, once again, January fourth this year. The library commission looked, and made look like a parking change, which you'll see at the end of this, so. Without further ado, oh, and one other thing, um, I'll I'll mention is, we wanna get through this whole presentation, because a lot of it is just. This is what we went through, this is what, uh, how we got to where we are, and then once we get through the whole presentation. We'll take you through the designs, if, uh, Todd will kind of outline what's going on with that and. The, uh, answer as much questions ahead of time before you ask them, and I will do the same for the parking plan too. Um, and then we we can get clarifying questions, go to any public comment, and then we can start discussion, okay? Um, go ahead.
One question, um, this presentation, it it wasn't in the packet?
No, it was not. Yes, once, once, once it's presented to you. The public will be able to, the thumb through it, yes, we we now have it. So, that's one thing, um, the, um. Oh, so as the, um, to finalize what we're doing here is, once we have this presentation, ask questions. Then we go to discussion, um, staff is looking for two things from this commission. One is possibly, if you want to. Go ahead and vote or some kind of motion to support one of the plans that we're proposing. Once again, could one, the other, or not at all, and then staff is gonna record, um. Literally and, uh, in writing, as much as we can, any comments you may have on those plans. Because the plan is to take this, uh, to the next possible council meeting, so they can decide, uh, on which way we're going with this.
So when you, when what goes to the council will include any motion, action, plus any comments?
Yes, yes, we will include comments, we will include what motion or any action that was taken here, but they will see what you're seeing today. Right, that will, that will remain unchanged.
Okay, so we're gonna see this, and you're hoping that we have a vote on it and we need to make comments. And then this is the design that's being proposed, this, and then it goes out to bid?
No, 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 we're taking it to council so they can see the conceptual design that we created.
Right, right.
And then if they like the concept.
Sure.
They will make the final decision on if we go forward for construction.
I got you. Okay, thank you. And do we have costs involved in this at all? We don't have any?
So with that, there's no other setup? Yeah, so I'm Todd Young with Verde Design. I've been working with the city and I recognize many of your faces. Uh, from the, uh, meeting. In this room, um, so let's walk through, we'll talk a little bit about, um, how we got to this point. So if you weren't participating in it.
I can see it on my screen.
Okay, so our process is, we're coming up with a master plan, and this master plan will give us a recommendation. That would then be able to take that to construction document stage. So, um, we identified where the park site was, we're gonna talk a little bit about the, uh, the the site itself. Then we're gonna talk about the schedule and the process that we've gone through. We went through a site analysis phase and then opportunities and constraints. And we did that with the public, we did a mid-listening session, is our first phase of the project. And then after that, we created, uh, a synopsis of the preferred program and materials. Then that was followed up with the conceptual phase where we shared with the community two different options and talked about what they liked. And what they didn't like, what they preferred, and so we came up with a hybrid plan from that. So that was our second phase of the project where meetings, and so we came up with two concepts. Now we're gonna be talking about the preferred plan. So we got the input from the community and we've, uh, we've distilled it into. Uh, a preferred plan based on all the comments, not Plan A or Plan B, but something that, uh, that brought the best of all the worlds. And tried to meet as many of the, um, components for the community as possible. So our project schedule was community meeting, outreach, the listening phase, then we went through the concept development. And today we're at the preferred design. The next step is after this, we would go to the, uh, the council with a presentation. So, would, i- as the basic, what is a dog park, what should it do? And basically, it's not just for the dogs, it's for the community, because it's the dog owners, the dog caregivers. Uh, who want to have the opportunity to socialize and let the dogs have an opportunity to socialize as well. So it is broader than a dog park, it is for the community, um, and all of the residents, including their, their pets. So project history, I'm gonna let, uh, Manny talk a little bit about this, because when I came on board, it was in this community outreach and master plan phase. But the city has made many efforts prior to that to get here. Yes, thank you, Todd. So, uh, from, from my perspective, and I've been on, uh, both sides of this, from recreation to the maintenance aspect. Is, uh, when I was the recreation director, to take you even beyond what's on the screen right now. Um, there were, there was a lot of interest from not only the commission, from the general population in this community. For a dog park or some kind of dog solution for them to get exercise and for the community to socialize. Um, so with that, there was a lot of community meetings, um, and the previous director, Donna Legge. She actually took some of those community meetings on when I moved to maintenance, and some of that went to council for some decisions. So, uh, that became, uh, an opportunity to, uh, to do something for the dog community. And we, uh, went to, uh, in twenty nineteen, the city council had a study session. And then the recommendation from the city council in twenty twenty, um, and there, uh, there was another, uh. Option as well for, uh, dog activity is what we were calling it at the time. And there were some outdoor, open, off-leash areas in our current parks. We've experimented with that, that kind of brought things down to the community really wanted some kind of fenced-in dog park. Both the dog community and the non, non-dog community, they felt it, it was more, um. It was better for every user at the park to have a fenced area. So moving forward, we had recommendations, uh, and then eventually had the authorization for the dog park. In getting there, the experimentation, which we no longer have the off-leash areas, but we do have two. Dog, uh, fenced-in dog areas, one of them being a pilot, um, and the other one being temporary. So the pilot program at McKinsey Park is still to be evaluated for improvements. We're still looking at how we're gonna make improvements on that, um, and that's the pilot aspect of it. But the dog park here is still labeled as temporary, it's just a one thirty-five by forty, I think. Um, dog run that we have here, and that was the temporary solution for a major dog park, this being termed permanent dog park now. So context, where are we in Hillview and where are the other dog parks in the area? This is just a general assessment. You can see that there's a big space right there and this kind of fills it geographically. We're not just talking about Los Altos community, but your geographic area, and so we're centered right there, filling, looks like a, a good, a good niche. Site context, so where are we talking about is a big question, where is the site, uh, being proposed? You can see on the right-hand side that yellow, that's where the pilot dog park is across the, uh, parking lot from where we are now. Um, I'm sure you are all familiar with the site, we're talking about the area that had the big tree in it, has the existing parking lot. And, um, is adjacent to the new generator facility that's being constructed. So here it is in plan view, so you can see the general area, that is the envelope that we're developing. Just a refresher, in case you weren't familiar or forgot, or wanted a little look at what it looks like now, or would it look like when we did our site?
Three days ago, it looks a lot different now.
Yeah, so, uh, these are some photos that we did when we were doing our reconnaissance. Another page of those, you can see the, uh, existing dog, uh, temporary facility right there. And then, where are we located? So you can see our proximity to the parking in front of the community center. There's a large slug of parking there, we've got, uh, the driveways that are adjacent to us. Hillview, um, Field, obviously, is right next to us. Um, so we've got some pedestrian access, you can tell that by the yellow dotted line, uh, we've got vehicular access through this. So we've got access both to the north and also to the, uh, to the east. Um, in that, in that realm, we also have some existing trees that provide shade in part of the site. We wanna be able to maximize and make sure whatever we're developing is responsive to the, to the natural environment. Also, when we're thinking about comfort and use of the space, we wanna make sure that we provide seating and shade for both dogs and humans. Um, and we wanna point out here that you've got the pedestrian access route adjacent to the Bus Barn Theater. You also have access across the driveway, um, from the north where the museum is and the library. So our first meeting, we met here, we had probably about forty or fifty people in the live meeting. Then we went into breakout rooms and we had about twenty-one people participate at tables where we did a little exercise about. What is, what are the best materials and what is the best programming opportunities for a park like this? So that was our first event, then we did a pop-up, that was at, um, downtown at the, uh, fair. And, um, memorable for me, I broke my Achilles that morning. But, uh, we had over two hundred and fifty people, and, um, I am recovering, so that's, that's good. Um, but it was a very, very popular event, uh, people were coming in with their dogs, so we had a lot of people who are interested in dogs. They gave us feedbacks, we used a lot of the, the dock boards, we also used, uh, posted notes to take down notes. And we also, you know, wanted to get more engaged with the rest of the community here, so it was an online survey that was open for two weeks. Uh, and in that survey, we had a hundred and eighteen people participate, which is a good number of, uh, of, um, voices coming into the program. We use.
Do you want to take questions at the end?
Let's go to the next slide.
After, after we get through with the parking, okay.
Um, so here's some of the things that came up at the community meeting, shade and seating, rain cover. Uh, visual screening from other uses, like the generator station, um, all-weather surfacing for the dogs and the people. Um, multiple entrances came up and separation between large dogs and small dogs was brought up. Pop-up event, uh, drinking fountains came up, uh, trees and planting, and how it integrates into the site was another topic. Uh, big spaces to play fetch and and throw a ball or something for the dogs. Uh, make sure there's proper signage for, uh, usage of the space, uh, and make sure that we provide the, the proper amenities for trash and. And waste collection. And these are examples of some of the, uh, the charts that we, uh, um, derived from all of those results. Um, but park signage, security, lighting and cameras, uh, were something that was brought up, making sure that the entire facility was accessible to all. Um, the control and maintenance. And the facility for hygiene was important.
Um, and then that was always safe and an opportunity for pedestrians or spectators to see without having to be engaged into the, uh, into the park.
So here, when we went through phases one and two, we asked follow-up questions about things like. The dispensers or the, the picnic tables or seating elements. So we consolidated all the results, and here's a little chart that shows you, the top three things that came up were drinking fountains. People like stumps and climbing events for the dogs, agility features were, were high on the list. Um, water features came up, um, so those were the. Um, so those were the things that we used to derive to the next level, uh, for the, for the final plan. There's just another look at some of the items that we looked at, which included surface materials. Um, we did find out, and I'm going to let Manny talk in a second about it, um, but we did, uh, hear from the community that the natural turf was, uh, the first choice. Um, synthetic turf was second. Um, bolt was preferred over decomposed granite. And then pea gravel sand was the least desirable of materials. Now, having said that, we did do some investigation and research and check with other compatible, you know, communities and their dog parks and how they're being maintained. And remember hygiene was very important, cleanliness is important, and all-weather surfacing are very important. So some of those things are not exactly, uh, meeting in consequence with the materials that we're talking about. So let's go to the next slide. And here are the ones that we are proposing today. It's synthetic turf, uh, with a decomposed granite for the two surfaces within the dog play area, uh, pre, uh, concrete, uh, standard concrete, uh, flatwork and also permeable paving. Um, it will tell you, uh, some about that. But on the left-hand side, a little couple of high, uh, bullet points that Manny had shared with us.
So in talking to and having experience with, uh, dog parks, um, I, I was able to put some information together and, uh, and just the, having seen that the natural turf, the natural grass came to the top as, as the most desirable, that, that is on paper basically, because as you see natural grass, that's what you want. And if we could keep natural grass in a dog park, looking that same way that the first day it opens, then yes, obviously that would be, it's not realistic that when you insert natural grass in a dog park, it's going to deteriorate. So that was a, that's a big, maintenance is a big deal with that. Um, synthetic, uh, surface is less, ultimately the surface is less expensive, uh, to maintain in the long run, other than surfaces that have to be filled, repaired, reseeded or even irrigated. I mean, if you're going to try to keep those, you've got to irrigate them. Um, so that's going to cost money as well. Now, with synthetic turf, the new way that the synthetic turf technology is taking us is they are very washable. So you, we will still use water on synthetic turf, but that is more of a hygiene thing. Um, so as, as we'll see, once again, these products are not selected yet. We still have to review, but there's a lot of synthetic turf companies that are coming up with dog park specific synthetic turf. Um, consistency for aesthetics, uh, you, you have the aesthetics aspect as well. I talked about that and the usage now. So if you're talking about ADA accessible, if you have grass, if you have dirt, there's going to be ruts, there's going to be puddles and it's going to be difficult. As we actually saw, we're doing repairs in this temporary one right now, uh, because of the, uh, highly traveled area that people walk into has actually created a rut. And when it rains, it's just a big puddle. And now there's certain wheelchair, um, patrons that can't get in that way. So we have to take them in a special way. Um, so it improves the appearance, it improves the, the accessibility. And then from what I've heard from other agencies too, is the feedback they're getting from their users are the dog park comfort. Uh, concrete areas are real hot for dog paws. I, I'm sorry, I don't know because I'm not a dog owner, but this is what we're hearing. Um, and actually in some cases DG is hot for dog paws as well. Um, we are hearing complaints of wood chip, of the wood fibers, um, actually being uncomfortable for dog paws as well too. Um, and of course, there's some things that we can do with the wood fibers. There's synthetic ones that we use in our playgrounds that are definitely better to use, but definitely more expensive. We spend a great amount of money every year to refill those things as well. Um, so that's, that's what we, that's what we've found of, of this, because you will see the majority of our, uh, preferred plan is going to be synthetic turf, but there'll be some mix in there.
I want to highlight that with the synthetic turf, there are organic enzymes that can be used, um, for cleaning it. So we're not talking about having to come out there with bleach or something like that. Um, so there's organic matter that, uh, breaks down, uh, using enzymes. Uh, so it's, uh, organic and, 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 and safe and healthy for the environment. So wood, uh, wood activities and, and features, uh, came to the top. These are images of the types of features for the agility area and also the dog play. So these actual features were, um, the favorite among the community from the ones that we had, uh, we had shared. Um, so pyramid dog walk, the teeter totter, uh, hoops that you can walk through or jump through, uh, tree stumps. Next one. Couple more of these, uh, features. Um, so a dog wash station was very popular, uh, place where you can hose off the dog, wash their paws, they can get a drink of water. We would have a drinking fountain for humans and also a bowl for dogs. Um, benches for, uh, the people, uh, as well as tables and then natural boulders, uh, for dogs to climb or step on or step over. Also using logs or stumps, uh, like we showed before, but talking about using natural materials there that, uh, could be upcycled. And then the dog dispenser, uh, with a, with a waste can as well, located in a place that maybe it's going to get to the keg. And then here is the, uh, shade structures that we're talking about, some type of cantilevered structure, uh, trash receptacles that would be, uh, easy on maintenance. They hold a lot and, uh, are very durable and can't be, uh, vandalized easily or entered by raccoons or bears. Um, and then fencing would be perimeter fencing around all of the, uh, dog area that may even have accent panels that, uh, feature something to be, uh, Los Altos. Maybe the Arts Commission could then bring us something that, uh, could be a logo or an icon that would be included into the dogs, dog area. And then don't forget, this is going to be integrated into the park so that it will have some landscape areas, both for stormwater and just for general landscaping screening. So meeting number two, these are the highlights that came out. Meeting number two was all about the concept development. We did have probably about 15 or 20 people in the meeting. We had about 10 people participating in a roundtable, uh, breakout groups. Uh, the online survey was about, uh, 26, uh, people participated in that. And we use that, we combined those information to, uh, to determine how we want to proceed with the best of both options. Uh, things that came in, uh, in those conversations, a corner entry vestibule was preferred, uh, to separate, uh, the agility area, area, um, and have that as a, as a feature for the, uh, dog play area. Uh, separate areas for large and small dogs were recommended by the community. Shade was very important, essential entry or gathering space where you arrive and, uh, uh, interest to- Protect the existing yard trees. Then nothing that we were going to do in this part of the project would impact those. So here's what we presented to the community. This was concept A. This is just, uh, a refresher of what we were seeing. This is a corner entrance with separate agility. Upper area was for the, uh, large dogs or the all dogs, large run area. And then the lower area was for the smaller dogs. Uh, it had, each had a natural grass area or, sorry, the upper area had a natural grass area, uh, which was small. Um, it had seating that was both grouped and gathered in the entry, but also separate independent seating through benches and tables elsewhere in the park. So you could have an independent moment as well as, uh, a group community area, um, to socialize. And then the intention was that each of the dog spaces had, uh, more than one surface or texture for the dogs to encounter. So their engagement enrichment is also included. So this one, the top one was synthetic grass with, uh, natural grass and the lower one was DG with synthetic grass. And then concept B was more of a central. Um, it was, gave you the same opportunities and amenities. Uh, we took out the natural grass in this one. The agility area was, uh, combined with the, uh, with the larger play area. Um, there was a, a concern that if you had a small dog, uh, you didn't want to take them into the general, uh, area, uh, to do agility training and that the agility training people might want to have some separation so that they can have their dogs focused on what the, uh, the owner or trainer was doing at the time. So, uh, for that reason, concept A seemed to rise as a preferred solution. And so we took that plan, uh, and discussed it with staff about this issue of, uh, natural turf and synthetic turf. Um, also, uh, talking about the corner entrance and where it's best, uh, located. And the concern was that we wanted to make sure that the parking was equally accessible from the east as it was from the north. So bringing that entry plaza and the arrival zone closer to the, uh, existing fields gave you more access and more functionality to the parking lot, uh, that we're in over here. Um, so we relocated that central, uh, or that entry plaza from the upper corner to the lower corner and then kept the same concept for the rest of it, using the DG zones and the synthetic turf. Using an area that has the shade that is grouping together, uh, most of your tables, uh, at the entry, so you can have a social factor. The entry plaza, let me go on to the next one where we're going to look at a little detail. So the entry plaza here, you can see we have, um, the trash receptacles on the right, drinking fountain or hydration station for the humans and the dogs. Then we have a, the dog wash area, which would be located on top of permeable pavers, so you don't have standing water. Uh, you have a bench in there so that you could sit down and, or you can leash your dog. Um, and then you, from there you go into the left-hand side, which would be the, uh, larger throw zone and you have a vestibule, so you can contain the dogs. Uh, in that zone, you'd also have the trash or the dispenser, so that if maintenance wanted to empty that dispenser, all you have to do is close the vestibule. You don't have to close the whole dog park. Um, and then once you enter into that bigger zone, you've got shade, you've got tables and then, and then free space plus the, uh, access to the agility area. And then if you went to the north side, you'd be going to the smaller, smaller dog area, which would also have some other features, which we'll look at the next slide. So here's the, uh, smaller dog area. It's got bench, use natural logs and boulders for them to, uh, to run around, sit on, get a little, uh, elevation change. Um, also an area where you can have different texture, uh, with the engagement zone with DG with, we're thinking these as maybe the synthetic grass mounds integrated with some natural boulders on top of the DG area. And then for the larger throw zone, uh, you've got the same types of amenities. You just have a nice, large diagonal throw that you can add here. And then you have engagement seating both at the central where you arrive and then scattered through the site as well. And then here we are with the overall. So if you look at the top above the agility zone, we're looking at that as for stormwater management, so that the water that is collected here would be able to be cleaned through there before it goes into, into storm drain system. Um, we also show here that there's buffers, landscape buffers between the dog facility and the existing Hillview Park. And there's also good transparency, but also a screening element between the library face to the north and, um, and the dog park itself. And then we've also got a little bit of landscape and screening and access on the east side between the, uh, Bus Barn Theater, uh, development side and, and this new, uh, amenity. So if there is a desire to make it into one space, this is an option where we can keep the same plan, but we remove the fence in between and the two vestibules remain. So on the right-hand side, instead of going into the small dog area, you're now using that as in and out. That is your entrance into the whole facility. And then you use the other door as an exit out. And that's a good way to separate the flows of dogs coming in and out, so one's not going in, there's not a conflict. It's not a bad thing, but this is even better. Um, but you do have one space, so all the dogs have to get along.
Otherwise the features are all the same. So it's just that little span between the agility area and the group seating area that's gone.
Exactly. So if you want to talk about the, uh, separation or not separation?
No, yeah, uh, my, my experience with that is, uh, separation usually is desired and that's what most dog parks, especially when you only have one major dog park. Most dog parks, uh, dog owners, they desire that because sometimes the little dogs just can't get along with the bigger dogs. Uh, but once again, uh, what, what we, as we're labeling, labeling them is a small dog area and we'll have to define what that is. Uh, but at some point it's an all dog area. So as much as the small dog area is smaller, the all dog area is for all dogs. It's not that bigger dogs get bigger space. Um, it's, it's, and everybody can, can plan.
Yeah, so what I'd like to do is, a good time to, um, have any clarifying questions?
Yeah, we, we, do you want to do it or just want to roll right into the parking?
Let's go into parking and then come back for all the questions because some of the questions may revolve around parking, just looking at that as well.
Yeah. Okay, so the parking study. So there was a parking study and our engineers, uh, with the city, they went ahead and put something together, um, which we'll present now. And we are looking at actually, obviously with this, with the construction of this dog park, it's going to take up the 16 spaces in that auxiliary parking area that's across from the library. Um, so it's going to be right over where the blue is, it says it'll be dog park. Um, but in that, where, uh, the parking study went ahead and is proposing, once again, this is still, um, a concept now, it proposing, um, three areas to add additional parking. And we're going to go through each of those areas right now and I'll explain, um, how they're going to work to, to help alleviate the loss of the 16 spaces. So there's the three areas looking overhead. One is immediately, uh, adjacent to the library on the south. On the east side, you've got area number two and we'll talk about how we, uh, how the, that this parking study addressed, uh, parking, uh, there as well as area three, which you'll see is, uh, is going to be options for an employee area. So area one, um, in the parking study, they identified eight spaces that they will be able to add that's, uh, immediately adjacent to the library and the pathway into the library, just, uh, to the south there of slots, uh, what is that? Four, five, six, seven, eight would be the proposed dog park. Yes, the green ones would be the added spaces. So the red spaces show where the parking, uh, stalls are. This would be labeled as two hour parking stalls. Once again, this is a proposal, so, um, so that, that still has to be, uh, has to be not only designed, but actually decided on how we're going to manage those spaces. So the, uh, ultimately, if you're keeping count, um, that's eight spaces that we'd be adding. So once again, we lost, uh, 16, now we've just added eight and there's some, um, description on how those parking spaces are going to be utilized, um, and why. Uh, one's added to the far left, one is added to, uh, to gain inside the landscaping, uh, area that's adjacent to, uh, the, the, the trees there. And then the entryway into the dog park needs to be covered up anyway because there's no, no driveway is needed. You're going to add three spaces there. And then where the current bus, uh, dog, or excuse me, dog, bus bike rack is currently located, you've got about seven, eight, grab it. Area number two is to the east of the library. Once again listed as two hour parking stalls, we will be adding one space there. Um, so we'll be able to utilize the landscaping that's right next to the current spaces that are there right up against the library. So there's your night space. And then in area three, we're proposing adding all of those spaces up to 29 total spaces, uh, but spaces 10 through 29 would be located, uh, immediately across from the, uh, the project that's actually being worked on, the expansion of City Hall, uh, offices there at Lacy, formerly known as Lacy, and right next to, uh, what is now the police department in that area. That is just, um, uh, ornamental grass right now. Um, and then it goes along to a dirt area, uh, next to the Friends of the Library sheds aside. So overall, you're looking at a 16 space loss for that, uh, auxiliary parking area for the dog park, but you're, the proposal for the parking study is showing, uh, 28, uh, space total gain. Now, these space, or 29, sorry, 29. So 29 gain, um, so, but these spaces in area three will be promoted for the library as employee parking. So those employees would get further away from the, from the closer parking that is next to the library. And I know that was a desire with, the feedback that we received was, okay, yeah, you can add spaces wherever, but it's not going to be close to the library. Well, this will get the employee cars a space to park that's not as far as City Hall parking, but at the same time making space, uh, for the, the patrons of the library. Okay? I think that's it. Yep, that's it. So- I think that's it, yep. That's it. So with that, um I think we can start taking questions. And we'll go back to the two versions of the dog park that were proposed. And I'll also take any parking uh questions and hopefully answer those.
I have a few questions. Um. So starting with the parking, um, and I don't know if this sort of research can be done. But do we have a grasp on? Because obviously more people will most likely be in this concentrated area. So do we have any grasp on like how many people will be driving to this park versus like walking? Like how many cars we anticipate? How many additional cars we anticipate? There's no really.
Right now, especially if you have a conceptual plan.
Okay, um, can I talk about the actual park now? Are we just?
Rather than talking about it, this is just questions to see if there's something that you don't understand about that was presented, we can hopefully clarify.
Um, okay, I'll try to reconfigure this so the clarifying question. Um, so in terms of the uh artificial turf, you said that there is a product now that's made specifically for dog parks?
Yes, there are turf products that are specific to dog parks.
Okay.
In one manufacturer.
Oh, good, because my, so I have a dog and we used to visit dog parks a lot. She's eleven now, so she wants nothing to do with other dogs. But um my concern is that like natural turf, like excrement naturally decomposes. And it doesn't like sit there and it's not messy, well, not after a while. Whereas like with artificial turf, I just envision it just staying there and like not going anywhere. So there's a, and have we considered like the maintenance of the artificial turf, whereas like brass you could just re-sawed? What, like what if, because I know like my dog likes to dig at brass. So has that, is that a consideration that's been taken into account? Okay, so it's, it's easy, relatively easy?
It depends on, it depends on the product. We still have to go through the product because yeah, uh dogs will dig. They tend not to dig if they're not getting very far. And that the turf will need repairs. They will have some tears in it. It's, it's fairly easy to repair those things. Uh, in the long, uh eventually you're going to have to replace it. And that's, that's something that we'll schedule out and uh and it'll be replaced.
Last thing, last thing. Um, there was a little bit of detail about the planting. Um, and I just wanted to request that we're mindful of like bees because my dog's been stung a few times on the nose. Because dogs are kind of curious and they go around.
Did you bring that back for comment?
Yeah, 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 of course, of course.
Taking notes here.
Absolutely, I was trying to.
But I will take those.
Okay, okay, absolutely.
Something we don't understand about what's being shown.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's it.
I just want to make sure I know what we're voting on. So I saw a concept A, concept B, and then the master plan.
Yeah, concept A and concept B were presented to the community. And we're just showing you that's where we came from. The master plan is what we're talking about today. It's really presented to you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
And then there's this.
And there's that one thing.
That's called the preferred plan. Keep that in your brain, those words, preferred plan. Then there's this little tweak you can do to take that tiny little fence between the agility zone and the gathering area. To make the two areas one big area. That's the second plan. The preferred plan is that. Um, Commissioner.
Um, to the right of the entry plaza, what is that, a diesel generator?
Yes.
And what, what is that for?
That's for this facility, uh backup generator, emergency.
So it's not going to be on all the time?
No.
Okay, and um I, I don't have a kid who plays baseball. Is this a foul ball zone?
It's soccer next door.
It's soccer, they don't, they don't air mail their shots or anything?
No, they'll, they'll probably get some balls in there, but yeah, that's frequent.
Um, I am wondering uh how much space is? I don't know, I'm trying to think of a positive way of framing the question, but I'm not getting lost. How much space is dedicated to the different entry plaza design? So this one versus the other one?
Going.
Are they the exact same size?
Pretty big, huh? Is that what you're?
Yes.
Does it look large?
So.
Are they the same between the preferred plan and the other plan that doesn't have the fence there?
No, those are the exact same.
Exact same thing, okay. And then um the little black slashes on the far left, lower left, what are those? The black oblong. I'm thinking benches, that's what I wanted to make out.
At the bottom, benches at the left.
Okay, that's what I wanted to just make sure. And then, and they're fixed benches, meaning they're always there. Okay, and then um when you say that, so clarifying, I'm clarifying. Um, the, when you say that there are heritage trees that will be protected. I'm curious, have you determined how many trees will be removed and how many will remain?
So in this plan, we are only dealing with the envelope that don't have any heritage trees.
Okay.
So that might be something that you need to talk to.
Yeah, we'll have to evaluate that still.
Yeah, the, the, any heritage tree that might be impacted, might be impacted by parking, but they're not impacted by the dog park.
Okay, those are questions that residents ask, so I want to make sure. Um, and then how long does synthetic turf typically last?
Centipolade.
Okay.
Soft turfs are a little bit less, eight to ten.
They're really durable, it's okay.
Can I elaborate on the benches?
I'd love it.
Okay, so the location of those benches are away from the fence. So that the dogs won't use this fence as a ladder to go over or vice versa.
Yeah.
And so that's one of the reasons why they're, look like they're a little floating. But also we strategically placed other elements like those stumps in front of it. So if bottles are coming to it and a person's sitting there, there would be something to rake, rake it up a little bit. And also for the dogs, so that there's some other obstacles for them to jump over or hurdle over, so they don't come crashing into something.
Okay.
That was part of the design strategy.
Okay, and then uh one more clarifying question. Have you, how are you dealing with the interface between the soccer fields and the dog park? I mean, I see the bushes, but have you considered how the typically parents would be sitting along there in their chairs? And they're watching the soccer game, that, that area gets quite a few parents sitting. And so I'm wondering, have you thought about how you're going to deal with that change and, and also how? Or maybe, you know, how high the fence has to be, what it's going to be looking like?
So we have a fence perimeter around the entire dog area.
Yes, that exactly.
So that fence also protects us against balls. Um, high-flying balls could still go over. But that's why we also located those trees there. So the trees are there to create more of a screening element between the soccer field activities and the dog.
Is there anywhere on the soccer field area for parents to be able to sit and watch the game?
Yes, the field does not extend. Once again, this field isn't a regulation field if you're looking at full size.
I'm just looking at how it's used.
Yeah, and the way it's used and the way they market, there is space between.
Okay, that's great. That's fine, I'm just asking my clarifying questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I have some clarifying question.
For the synthetic turf, are you guys putting in sprinkler systems?
Uh, we don't have that recommended, but uh there would be water available uh for hosing down. So quick coupler systems.
Quick spot in the summer, right?
Then, then just to, to help, uh, tag on that, once again, this is conceptual, yeah. Uh, when we do the plans, it may be maintenance uh uh prudent for us to install sprinkler systems.
See, some places do where the dogs, like they have a certain sprinkler time, the dog's going nuts because they turn on and the dog.
Interesting, but just for regular wash down, it's either quick couplers or.
Okay, I have a bunch of questions. Um, so can, can you go up to the, to the um, to the screen? And show me the actual paths from the west side of, or the east side of the E O C generator? To go into the two um areas. I want you to just show with your pencil.
So there is a, uh, there's a site, we have a, we have another um uh image. Uh, Casey, that has a larger um view of the site. It's in the beginning, so I apologize. I don't know which slide it is. Okay, so here we have a sidewalk that's here and it stops here. So we would need to get ADA accessibility up to there and then bring it behind the generator. And then this is the access and then this is, would be a walkway that we would en- uh encourage uh people to come from the north side. And this would be coming from the east.
Go zoom back in and go to the, the bigger one, because I want you to take me all the way into the park.
Yeah.
Through both vestibules.
So let's go back to the other one because that's the air entrance. There we go. One more. There we go. So here, we're arriving here from either direction, then we're talking about maybe a medallion in the ground. Uh, then you go through this door and if you want to go to the smaller dog area, here's the gateway right here. And then here's your vestibule. There's a bag dispenser here and then here is another gate. So that you've got the double gates here if the dog can't go through. And also we're changing the direction intentionally so that there can't be a straight shot. Nobody can, no dog can run straight clear through, so that there's a turn. So, and then you're here at this plaza and this is your fence that separates it. And then you can go into the small dog zone area, the agility area over here. Now, if I was going to the all dog area, I'd do the same thing. I'd come over here through this gate to this vestibule. Through this gate and then into the gathering space. And then this has an ADA accessible walkway to all the features.
And then there's a um south-facing entry into the. Okay, so my question is this. Um, number one, why is there no vestibule at the entry to the entry plaza? Where the medallion is.
The idea is that you would have your dog on leash before you did that.
Okay, so there will be a rule to keep dogs on leash in the entry plaza.
Okay, we haven't addressed rules yet, but.
Well, that, that's my concern.
Yeah.
Doggy, the dog is not, um, the dog needs to be on a leash, okay? Because that's, I just wondered why there's a vestibule with the human hands. Okay, so there just wasn't one design.
I understand what, what you mean. Most dog parks have like a little vestibule like right there when you enter, right? It's almost like in New York how they have like the weather.
The reason I ask that is for the, I've got a couple others. So the dog wash station, which right now is right in the middle of the entry plaza. So most dogs, um, you know, that is going to be an activity area for dogs, so you know.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, are we commenting now or are we asking questions?
No, I'm going to get to my question. So my question is for the, the dog wash station. Is that set off by any kind of fencing?
No, it's not.
So it's open to the plaza?
Right, and if you, and one of the things about the, that dog station, it actually has a place where you can tie your leash to the dog. So they can be washed and tethered at the same time.
Okay, great. Next question, um, are there any oak trees that overlap that, that provide shade over this um park design?
At the very west end, I believe there might be some of those existing trees that are oats.
Um, you mentioned security cameras, is that part of the design?
No, it, it, not, not at this point.
As a city, any kind, uh, any kind of build, we actually address security. Um, so that'll, that'll be in the, in the separate. Yeah, that'll be included in the uh construction design. Once again, it's a conceptual, it's a concept we're looking for, but security uh latches that we use for the gates and stuff, all of that will, will come.
I, I get latches, it's just that security cameras rise to a different level of, you know, I, I want to understand.
I'm not committing to them. That's something that I think was received as a comment, right? Those were comments that were received, that's all.
In terms of the construction of the fields, the turf fields, are the drainage mechanisms all throughout the turf? Or are they perimeter drainage systems?
Once again, it'll come up in constructions.
Um, now, the screening to the soccer field, I noticed I've heard you mention twice and you once. That the, will only have the four-foot-high fence and then what? Well, I, it was on the drawing and you referred to that fence as the fence. So my question is this, is there any consideration for putting a high netting? Not a fence, but a netting um to prevent soccer balls from going into the dog park? Is that part of the possible design?
It's not included in the dog park design.
Not included in the conceptual design. And once again, the height of the fence has not been recommended. Uh, most dog parks are either four or five feet. We have a four-foot fence here, we have a five-foot fence in McKenzie for us, as an example.
Okay, so I'm just concerned about soccer balls will go into that dog park with great frequency. Um, next is the um. I want to, the, the, where the tree, the line of trees on the south, that green area, is that supposed to be um natural turf? Or are those bushes?
Yes, intended to be a landscape, some kind of hedge.
Okay, okay, so not a flat area, not a seating area.
Yeah.
And there's a fence external.
The fence, the fence line is right here.
So the buffering is outside the fence, excellent. Okay, and then. On the parking, um, you, you drew the parking as diagonal and that's by, that's intentional, right? And is, was there a reason why diagonal was preferred to parallel?
The current parking uh that's there is diagonal. That would be the easiest right now. Once again, it's just a proposal, uh, but that's, that's the way the current parking is. It's diagonal to a certain point and then it's, it's head on, straight.
Okay, and then the last question is, um, where you have parking spot one, you remember it one? Is there a reason why you can't put more parking spots further to the west?
Yes, that's a good question. Actually, um, the, in, in the parking study, the engineers um felt that coming around the corner. It was going to be too close as cars entered through the entrance there for them to react. So they are giving them space to react, more space. So if you add an additional space, see that? So that's a parking spot one, you're saying add another one, right?
Yeah, just because, I mean, that's the entire width, the entire depth of the parking lot on San Antonio to the, to the commercial building there. That's two, that's a whole length of a parking uh spot plus a two-way aisle for cars going two-way. That's a pretty large distance.
And keeping, keeping the directional at the same, the recommendation is not, is not to add another spot. Because that would give very short reaction type for somebody pulling in. If somebody's pulling out of that spot and that spot adding is already shortening that. So that, that's just what this is, consumption.
And is there any, um, the last one on parking, is there any possible, um, is there any potential then to? Well, let me ask it a different way. By transitioning from diagonal spots to per- to perpendicular spots, do you lose any capacity? Can the others be also changed to diagonal?
In most cases, uh, you gain some space. I don't, I believe through this study though, it wasn't a worthwhile net gain to change the direction of those. But I'll have to look a little further in. The other thing that it affects is the currently planted trees. So if you change the direction, it may affect either the roots or the trees themselves. Though, so keeping that as similar as possible.
The depth here is greater than the depth there. That's just, that's just a function of the geometry. So this, these are actually deeper and this curve is set closer in, you're further away from the drive aisle than it is on this one. Just an observation.
That's where the proposed park is, right there, where you use. Can you show me where?
So the proposed dog park area is, it was starting here. And we were using the parking lot existing, coming all the way over to here. Sorry, right to about here is where the generator is going in here and we're taking it all the way to that side. This is the bus barn theater. That's the bus barn um parking.
So there's.
Okay, so bus barn's here, generator's going here.
Oh, I got the wrong point.
Generator's going here, okay? Then the dog park will go from just on the side of the generator and go all the way to about right here. There's a fence here, this is the parking for the real estate company. I believe it's real estate. But that's the parking. So there's a fence underneath these trees here. So all of this will be dog park. And then you've got the generator, okay?
All right, those are, those are all of my, um. Oh, oh no, I'm sorry, there was one more. For the, um, the one, the area three parking, the, the one where we gained back a ton of space, or a ton of spaces. Will those be reserved for employees or will they be available to the public?
I'm, I'm not sure exactly what the, what the recommendation is, but I think it would be uh employee parking only. That would push the employees into that space, but that's as of right now.
Okay, thank you. So that's all my questions.
Couple of clarifying.
So two-hour parking, is there going to be a parking enforcement officer hired?
I imagine there will be, but once again, that's something that, that we'll have to talk to the kids about.
And then the other one is, will it still be two-way traffic in that? And then the other one is, will it still be two-way traffic in that area? So, you're coming off of San Antonio into it, it's been talked about at times to make that one-way in so that you don't have both things, and then the, the parking is a little less, you could get more parking, you would have less likelihood of accidents. And then the flow, have you, do you know, Manny, is it gonna be?
Absolutely. Very good question, that's the question that was proposed. Whoever goes to that meeting on the fourth, January 4th, and sees with the library commission, that was one of their ending questions.
I was at that meeting.
What's going, okay, you're at the meeting, and they're, they're talking. And so, I don't know if you heard the answer then from Anthony. Anthony was saying that basically what was recommended for this, once again, engineers looked at this, the traffic engineers looked at it, and this is, it is not recommended that that turns into one-way because then you trap everybody in, and it adds traffic flow and exit onto the arterial hill view as well as San Antonio through the police exit of, yeah, of, of the city hall parking. And that would have to be studied if we are going to go to the one-way.
Okay, and then, my other clarifying question is about entrances for the park. So, so I'm just gonna ask questions, and then I'll put it in comments later. The, did you consider two separate entrances, like in different locations? Like, we have two now at the temporary dog park here. And then we have, I mean, two in two different locations of the park.
It looks like there's an entrance right there, like in between those trees.
That's the maintenance entrance, yeah. And that's the same thing here, the two entrances here, there's only one entrance, but the maintenance entrance is the other one. But that has to be used sometimes because of the condition of, of the surface.
So, it was something that, I'll, I'll wait and make my comments later. That was, so, so was it considered to put in a, a separate, two separate entrances in two separate locations within the park for humans and dogs to use?
There was, there was a concern about someone getting trapped in it, and that was part of the community outreach. So, therefore, we have an entrance here, another door here. So, whenever you're into one of these smaller spaces, you have two ways out. Same thing with this, you have two ways out, and from this one you have two ways out. And if you were over here, you've got three ways out.
Okay, I just didn't want to get into comments.
And then for the dog wash area, will the water be turned off at certain times of the day?
I think that's, that's a maintenance question. I haven't addressed anything as far as rules and maintenance goes, yeah.
Okay.
It could be.
Okay, all right, great, thanks.
I'm not familiar with dog wash stations at a park, so I, I just want to clarify in terms of the suggested design. Has there, is that like a tub thing, or is it down on the ground, on the paved area, and the water just kind of flows out? How do, how do those things work?
It is in a recessed area, and it's over permeable pavers. So, the water will go down and then drain away through the pavers. So, we shouldn't have a lot of water on the pavement at all.
But it's down on ground level, so if somebody's cleaning off their dog, they're bending over and cleaning their dogs, okay?
And it has a, basically it's a hose tube with a short hose on it.
I guess I have a question about that too, and, and a couple of questions. Are we able to see the numbers of people who wanted certain features? Like, when you did the survey, can we actually see the numbers and get a, because the meeting I was in, the dog wash area was talked about, and people, there were only like two people that thought it was a good idea. And everybody else was like, no, that's a terrible idea. So, I just wonder, like, how did you establish that this was a top vote getter?
Yes, we have numbers, and we have it in our report.
Okay, in this report?
No, we have a longer, more elaborated report.
And when will we see that?
I'm gonna turn it over to Manny when we finish.
Okay, good, okay, so we'll get a copy of it?
Yeah.
Can we get a copy of it? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's no, no problem with it. I don't know what, at what stage that will be though, because council's gonna see this pretty soon, which I'll pop about at the end, so...
I think staff is recommending this. Staff is recom, I, I, can, is it? Say that staff is recommending master plan concept. Great, okay.
I can comment or elaborate a little bit on that. Yes, what we did is we consolidated comments from both meetings and online surveys.
Oh, no, I knew you did that, yeah, no, I knew you did that. I just wonder, if you have a total of 200 people, let's say as an example, and five of them wanted this dog wash station, you know, I just want to understand the percentage is.
We had 118 people in the first survey online, but we only have 26 people participate a person.
Right, and so I wanted to understand the numbers. Like, for me, it's a data thing, I want to see it, okay, thank you.
Do you have any for vote, Chair?
No, we need, we need to finish the questions, and then we'll go to public comment, I think we do have one.
So, we're done with, I think we're done with clarifying questions. Okay. So, now we can ask for a public comment, if there's any.
We do have one. Alice.
That slide shows the parking by the police station, please.
Um, yes.
Please, Alice, thank you.
Thank you, we'll get their notes in a slow.
The, the doors automatically lock.
Actually, Manny, I have to leave the meeting, sorry.
Okay, that's this one, and then I will...
Everybody at the desk?
There should be.
Usually she is.
Yeah, but perhaps she went to the restroom. Okay, I'm trying to make it bigger, give me just a second, or it'll slowly get there.
My name is Alice Mansell. I am a Los Altos resident. I've been working in downtown Los Altos since I was in fourth grade. I've got over 50 years of experience in the real estate business. And I've been working on the orchard, first helping with the harvest, last July. Then I was asked to help with public affairs, and a lot of photos that you see on the social media were photos I took. So, I've been deeply involved in this, and trying to get it to speed with, you know, how is the orchard? So, wanted to point out a couple of things. I, I didn't know whether it was Manny or Todd who said this, that these parking spaces would be on grass, that is, by the police station, that is accurate, and these would just be on dirt. However, you will notice there are three apricot trees. There was a deal made, and somebody at City Hall, I haven't been able to track it down yet, and people from the museum with the contract to take care of the orchard, to not include these on the historic orchard map that the city likes to use. Again, the city doesn't honor the state historic map. They just make up maps because of their inconsistencies with maps, they claim a right to do that without public comment. So, these three trees, and a bunch here, and a bunch here, were deliberately not given irrigation last fall with a closed-door backroom deal because there were plans by City Hall to backdoor the Measure A and convert the Lacy to their offices. So, to say that these are just dirt, that has nothing there, is not accurate. State historic map for the historic orchard includes these. And in fact, it also includes these in behind the police station, which by the way, you can see they've put a little mobile home there of some sort. They put a security fence, they've got no irrigation here. We've seen many city staff saying they don't like to look at the orchard, they put up these big fences. Like, you'll notice at City Hall, over there, they put a big tall fence up and a concrete pad taking out more orchard tree size. They'd love to see them all die from neglect, not irrigating and all that. So, I urge you, please do not pick this site. If you want to put parking here and have it reserved, because when I did see the floor plan, just so you know, there's going to be a little public conference room that will be occasionally available to the public. And the city manager will have his own office the same size as the conference room. And then there's going to be a little fence outside there. Maybe it's a private patio for him, nobody knows, I can't find out. Then a big fenced area here with another generator, HVAC and all that stuff. Maybe I'm wrong about the generator, but just so you know, that tree was taken out, and it was perfectly healthy, it was one of the biggest producers. And that's what's going on in the orchard. Got city council, I mean, city staff essentially backdoing the Measure A, which said 72% of people didn't want to build some big new thing in the orchard, either for budget or historic reasons, whatever. Again, I urge you, okay with me on the grass, but not here, thank you.
Sorry, I'm writing my notes here. All right. No other?
That's it. Probably just notes and journal. We're just setting up ready for...
To get ready for your comments.
Okay, so now that we've heard public comments, and we've gotten all our clarifying questions answered, now we're gonna open a discussion so that we can hopefully come up with some, some agreement on some comments that we would like staff to take to the council. So, I'm gonna just do a roundabout, I, I don't know how much... I can't really say anything today. Okay, okay, so, you know, I mean, feel free to contribute if you have some thoughts. And then, you know, how, depending on how everybody else's comments go, you know, it might, it might influence, you know, so don't feel like you're up there. I know you, just for your benefit, that is the preferred plan for the dog park. It, it varies a little bit from the stuff we saw at the pop-ups and the meetings, but it incorporates all the community feedback. Statistically, got charts and graphs that he showed us, supporting the various features in it. Morris also asked afterwards that we get the copies of all those statistics, which we will get access to. It was a bizarre thing. And there is a second plan, and all it is exactly the same as that one except that it removes that little fence between the brown area at the top on the left and the entrance area. So, in other words, the little dog area, which is at the top green, and the big slash little dog area at the bottom, because little dogs can go everywhere. Big dogs can only go into the bottom one. It takes that fence away between so that now dogs can go everywhere. That's the only difference. Everything else is exactly the same. The preferred plan is to have a fence there. Okay? Would you like to open?
No.
You don't want to open our comments?
I don't, I want to wait, thank you.
Okay, anybody want to open with comments?
If you like. Okay. So, as I mentioned, the plants are concerned, I just want to make sure that we're mindful of what we choose, that they're not poisonous to dogs, that they don't attract a lot of bees. And I think that Commissioner Yehay had a great idea about the sprinklers. I think both for like odor control of the artificial turf, and then also for cooling off the artificial turf. My understanding is that it does get kind of hot, because it is like a, it's like plastic, right? Is my hat plastic? Uh, let's see what else I have, maybe I'll just come over. I'll, I'll think of it, and I'll come back to it. But overall, I think it's a really mindful design, I think that a lot of thought really went into it. I like that there are separate areas. I also like that there's just like a, a large space with nothing there because I know, like, some dogs tend to run a lot, and they can run into things and trip and whatnot, so I appreciate that. I don't think the soccer ball thing will be an issue, my sons play soccer at Hillview. I, I rarely see soccer balls go over that way, honestly, because they usually play like... Yeah, exactly, so if that gives anybody peace of mind, I, I rare, and I, most parents do seem to sit along the, the street side here because that's where they park. So, yeah.
Me, sure? Okay, fine. So, I've spent a ton of time in the dog parks. I was a part of the dog park pilot that was out on the baseball field. I spent hours and hours and hours there gathering information, interacting with users. I've watched this dog park to some degree. I really watched the McKenzie one, I have loads of data on that one. I've talked to loads of dog owners about everything. I did come to the first meeting here and talked to a lot of people. So, I, I have a pretty long history of working on the dog park in the city since I've been on park, and I would say, I feel very, you know, fortunate to be part of it. I feel, of the process, I feel fortunate that we've come this far. It's, it was 10 years before we got to where we are actually tying down a dog park. So, I, I'm happy about all of this. So, my comments are based on things that I've heard from dog users, and them, some of them are from Los Altos, some of them are not. And so, so that's where I'm coming from. The, I think the fence height's great. I, I really, really, really would like us to have some decorative panels on the fence where they are seen by the public, just to give it a little bit of a, a pop and an oomph. I think the entry area needs to be smaller. I just think that we're taking a lot of space that could be used for the dogs to be able to run and play for what I would call a grand entrance, and I'm not sure we need to have such a grand entrance. The water feature, I would say, in my opinion, is a hard no. So, here are the reasons. We have droughts. People will also use that wash to wash their dogs, like bring them there, wash them instead of doing them at like a dog wash or something like that. So, we'll have soap the shoes, we'll have, you know, baths, basically is what's gonna happen. The dog wash originally, from the conversations that I remember and have heard people talk about, was if we had mud, you know, like this sort of situation where we have mud, and at McKenzie where it's muddy, and they don't want to put their muddy dogs into their cars. So, that's where dog wash makes sense to me. If we're doing turf, and we're doing the DG, and we're doing permeable paver type stuff, I don't think we need a dog wash, I think it's a waste of money. Maybe we can put the money into some other feature in the dog park that would make sense. I'm not a fan of artificial turf, but compared to natural turf, there is no way in heck you can do natural turf in a dog park, it's just a mud bath. And I am a huge fan of that, having the natural turf. The bark is, did not work. People love the artificial turf area in the McKenzie Park, I hear people say it all the time. People do like having some sort of hardscape, like the asphalt, but they didn't like the bumpiness of it. So, I think the combination is gonna be really nice. I like that the small dogs have an area that they can go i- if someone wants to use that for small dogs. When I'm watching people and listening to people, particularly this comes up at McKenzie, but here too, when they're throwing for dogs, the dogs run, especially dogs, big dogs, they're running at such a high speed that as they get to benches and stuff, and so I like the little wood pieces for this, they smash into them and they crack their heads. So, I, my opinion is, we need to have the least amount of stuff in the way of the dogs being able to run and grab that ball. And if you think about like a big German shepherd, or, I don't know, all my dog breeds, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, Labors or... Yeah, yeah, thank you. I can see him in my face, I just couldn't get up in my head, I just couldn't imagine it. Those dogs run really fast, so the least amount of barrier that we have for that because that's what people seem to really want. They want a place to stand, they want a place to sit and gab, they want to be able to throw that ball a long distance for their dogs. They want it to be shady, so I, I like the shade, I, you know, that you've come up with, although I wish it could be a little softer-looking, not so hard. Also, I think, you know, in the environmental aspect of it, the more we create cement and metal and that kind of stuff, the hotter we make the planet. So, if there's any way we can work with something that maybe has some airflow to it, that lets some sun in in the winter, but allows for the shade, you know, like perforated or decorated panels, they have some beautiful things available, that would be a really nice part of the shade. The plants, from what I'm understanding, are gonna be on the outside of the fence for the most part. So, but I agree, we've heard the bee thing before. Someone asked about the oak trees, I think it was Janine. We have a ton of oak trees at the McKenzie one, no one has complained about the leaves on those. So, I feel, I mean, we have a lot of oak action there, and I've never had any complaints. Could we put any kind of solar panel on the, on the shade thing, if we have any use for that? Any way we could use solar up there? And I would like to know the size breakdowns on the small and the large size, the, the small dog and the, the multi-dog area. And then, Young Yay's idea for the sprinklers, you know, I think it's a good idea. My main thing is that it's what... My main thing is that it's what Jenna was saying. When there's feces on the ground, that even when you're picking it up from the dog drop, you know, when they drop it, and you're doing it with grass, you can grab some of the grass and the dirt, so you get more of the debris that's left. When you're doing that on artificial turf, this is what people have told me, is there's still residue left. So, that's something that I think we have to figure out. How do we deal with that on a daily basis? It's interesting, here, Hillview, I see more feces left. At McKinsey, I see far less feces left. So, people kinda, you know, regionally, maybe pick up more and less. So, uh, the parking, I, I've seen that a couple times. I think the parking's gonna be a good solution. I do have my concerns, as our speaker, our resident speaker, had mentioned, about it being anything approaching on anything that has to do with our historic orchard. So, I would say, if we don't get 29 spaces and we get 20 spaces or 22 spaces, that makes sense to me, and that's okay. Keeping as many trees as we possibly can everywhere that they are would be really good. DG, from my understanding, if it's a running area, and I, so I like that this isn't a heavy running area where you have it convert the paws. So, I think that's really good. Permeable pavers that actually have good firmability, I think, is crucial. So, I know some pavers have like openings in them, and that I know could cause a weed issue, but that would be another thing to maybe look into, that type of a paver. I, I, I think the seating that you have at the front is really nice at the entrance, and the benches and the other areas, I think, are great. And I appreciate that you're thinking about how people with different mobility are gonna be able to move into these areas. And I, I think, on that back left, uh, top left corner, I don't see seating, and so that would be my only thing is, do we, well, I guess those tables right there are the seating for that. Okay, so, I think that's all my comments for that.
Okay, my comments. Terry, did you wanna make some comments?
Uh, I only have one comment. The, the gate area, I think, is fine, because what I've experienced is a lot of people tend to congregate at that gate area before they let their dogs out. They're, they're, they're acquainting their dogs to the new dog, and they're making sure that the dogs are gonna be okay with each other before they release them to the wild. So, I'm okay with the gate being that big. That's my only comment. And I, I do like the water feature, so.
Okay.
I thought you were gonna be wanting me to do that?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Um, the, I didn't say this clearly. I prefer the other gate layout on the other plan. So, we've got this preferred plan, and then you have another plan where it didn't have split in and out gate.
No, the second plan is exactly the same as that is gate-wise, with the exception of the little fence. We're not going, we're not going back.
Okay, 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 sorry about that. And then, the other was, Jenna had asked about people driving, how many people drive to the, and, and I would say that at this dog park, actually at McKinsey too, lots of people walk. There, fewer people drive than they walk, depending on the time of the day, but that's been my experience. And, but because it may become a destination kind of a thing, so to speak, we may get more. But right now, my observations, my notes, and along with our former commissioner that did the work with me, John Corrigan, was that more people walk to this park. Okay?
Right, my comments. The comment on the practice at Hillview, I know that when games happen on Saturdays, I mean, I coached at Hillview for 10 years. It is an east-west activity, and the balls that go sideways are rare. They usually go over the goal lines. So, but, but during practices every day of the week, the teams divide into two or three, and practices north-south. And that's when the ball's in the, in the, in the, in the thing. So, I'm still a fan of a regular, whatever fence you're gonna put, that's fine, whatever. But then that there should be screening, you know, like tennis netting, or golf netting, whatever you wanna call it, that goes up at least 20 feet. A lot of other dog parks that are near athletic fields do that for the same reason. You know, chain link is, can be done, but it's ugly, and nobody likes to do that. But netting works, especially since this is a younger age field, and therefore, the balls are not gonna bust through a netting. So, I'm a big fan of that. Also, the, the bushes along the south end, again, the buffering, the visual, the buffering between the, the dog park and the kids, a lot of dogs are reactive to kids, especially when they're running around like maniacs, and screaming and yelling and joking around. So, that buffering needs to be as, the green buffering needs to be as opaque as possible. You know, hedge, hedge-type growth versus, you know, a plant here and there, as much as possible. Visual screening is very key. You probably don't need as much visual screening from the north side, because not too many people are walking in the street, but it's all the kids along the soccer field that will make reactive dogs go bananas. So, investing in screening will lower the, lower the market frequency. I wanna reiterate, no poisonous, no bee-intensive. I personally have a lot of bad history with live oak leaves spiking into my dogs' paths, dog paths. I think the reason they don't complain at McKinsey is because it's really easy for maintenance to blow off the oak leaves from the turf and cement area. And, and so, it tends to mitigate that. At Hillview, there's not a problem, but in the current park. But, you know, over there, there is a ton, even kids would sometimes get their feet when they're, when they're goofing around and take their pleats off, they get their feet spiked. So, I, I still have issues with overhanging oaks. The, I'm, I'm neutral on whether we do the preferred plan or the bee plan with the fencing. I, you know, if this, my only requirement is this. If there is going to be a fence between the large and the lar, the small dog and the large slash small dog areas, there also needs to be visual screening. Otherwise, you're gonna have dogs just barking at each other through the fence. And, you know, a lot of times, when dogs are held apart, that's when they actually get more reactive. Eventually, if you let dogs interact, and if the owner is attentive, you can get dogs to mix, but that depends on the quality of the owner. So, if there's gonna be a fence there, I would suggest that some level of screening. It could be decorative panels, or it could be, you know, I don't, I don't like plantings there, because dogs will just pee on it and kill the planting. So, it has to be some kind of, some, some level of opacity. It could be, you know, some, the green, the green netting, then with a couple of art panels on top of it, so the dogs can't see each other. I think that's very important. I am also a hard no on the bath feature. I also agree that people will use it as a place to bathe their dogs, and the surfaces here do not seem to require a bath. So, I, I just think that's a lot of money. It'd probably be beautiful, but it's just a lot of money for a feature we don't need. I'd rather see some other feature elsewhere in the park. So, I'm not a fan of that. The last thing I need is for my dogs to get wet the other day. So, and then the next is, on the ho, the irrigation. The sprinklers are good, because they cool off both the fines and the turf, and that's necessary. But it's not a, it's not a forceful water. Therefore, it's not gonna address the issue of poo remains, and maybe even some dried, you know, urine. So, if, if you see your way to affording the sprinklers, I'm not against it, I'm fine with it, but you still need to have hose couplers. It doesn't eliminate those, because you need the hose to literally spray down certain areas that tend to get more mess. Over time, with net, what I've, what I have found with artificial turf is that dogs, especially again, if they have attentive owners, dogs will tend to poo on the perimeters of the areas where they run. They won't drop and poo right in the middle. So, it's the areas along the perimeters on turf that tend to get the most soiled, and sprinklers often don't get those areas with any force. So, you really still need the hose couplers. And if we only have enough for one form of water supply, then I would go with hose couplers, because then that allows the maintenance people to be very directional with the force of the water, cleaning the, cleaning the turf.
Um, with regard to why there seem to be more feces at Hillview versus McKinsey, I have an observation based on my experience of both parks, and that is because Hillview has more natural turf and more dirt, and dogs have no problem pooping on that. And people have no problem leaving their dog poop there. Every time I went to McKinsey, people were much more diligent about picking up their poo, because it was like right on the cement, or right on a visible part of the grass, or right on the turf. And so, they were more mindful. On Hillview, where there's natural turf and dirt everywhere, it's like people didn't care. And so, they started leaving more and more poo there. In other words, the frequency of poo presence rose as the quality of the turf went to crap. Unintended. So, okay.
I got it.
Yeah, you got it. Good job. So, I believe that the entry plaza is just fine. I, and this is a change of mind that I had, because initially, I thought, I want all play area for dogs. This is not for humans. I, I don't think dog parks are for humans. They're for humans with their dogs. But I understand that the community believes that they are, and I understand that there are studies that show that people create social bonds, and that's great. I just don't want those social bonds to get in the way of them being attentive, attentive to their dogs, because that's usually what happens. But, but even regardless of that little diatribe I put forward, I believe that that plaza, because it has seating area, because it has, even if we take away that wash, that bath thing, it's a nice transition place for groups of dogs to get calm before they enter the vestibule. But there's another reason, and that's that some people may not want their dogs to go run around like crazy dogs. And so, they have two goals. The entry plaza, sitting to have some, you know, chat some people with their dogs right there in place. You know, their job is place, or to walk over to the agility area and do some training. So, this gives a variable, just one more dynamic in the park that I think is very necessary. And I think that the size of that is good. My only concern is, the more hardscape, the more heat. Therefore, shading will be very important in that large plaza. But I think the functionality of the plaza is awesome. So, it has changed my mind, because I was firmly against it in the early drawings. But now that I've thought about it, I went and did some research, I did some reading. I went to a park far from here that has a nice entry plaza, and I saw a lot of dogs with their owners, spent most of their time in the plaza, didn't go running. And I'm like, ah! So, okay. Now, on the parking, I think the parking solutions are clever and of substantial size. I think we should try to maximize the parking spaces, because, you know, we have a lot of people that go to our library, and we have, and we'll have people coming to this. So, I'm very sensitive to the situation with the trees and the orchard. I personally will advocate strongly for our orchard to have very literal delineation through the legislative process in our city. I believe the two areas, however, that are outside what we're traditionally thinking of the muse, of the, uh, the orchard over which the museum has some purview now, which is the rectangle there, surrounded by library, San Antonio, the, the north parking lot, and the, the driveway, should be the focus. And I would, I would be okay with removing apricot trees to create the parking spaces if we do everything we can to preserve those trees and move them elsewhere. And they can be moved. I have moved one of my best oak, um, apricot trees in my yard, two of them. And one of them had to be moved, because a redwood tree was about to kill it through the strangling of the roots. So, I moved it 40 feet in my, on my land with professional movers, and that thing is still alive 15 years later. So, it can be done. It is not cheap. And I would suggest that, that those three trees where the library sheds are, I don't have anything to say about the ones behind the PD, because we never see those. I, I think they just, they should get irrigation, I guess. But the three trees that are there, I think they should be moved over into the orchard and given a new home, and then turn that place into the, the parking spots, and then maintain the library sheds there. So, those are my comments.
Can I ask, where are the drinking fountains here?
Drinking fountain is in the plaza on the right-hand side. And we have a high-low, uh, bottle filler and a dog. So, we have all of those components right here at this location, and they're ADA accessible.
I guess my last comment is, I think it's a really cool design.
I also, I like what you said, Teresa, about the opportunity to do like artistic panels.
Yeah, there's some really cool ones.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's a new call for art, right?
Yep. Well, there's that, but the artistic panels, you had it on one slide where it had the dog coats. They're pre-made, and you can get different panels, and they're really fun. I mean, some will have a dog, some will have, you know, a plant, some will, you know, it just kinda depends that they're already cut out. And, um, it was actually at the California Park Recreation, CPRS thing that I went to when we win as a commission, that I saw that, and I was like, what? We need to do this. And Donna Leggy was here, and I think she passed it on to you. And so, that, they're pretty cool. But maybe there is something we could do with a call for art with this dog park. There may be something that would be really fun that could be done here for panels.
Original covert.
Like, and that would be, I think that's a great goal and comment to make is, what can we do where we bring actual art into this park, or around the park?
The one thing, that medallion.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, there could be a medallion done with, you know, some.
We could even turn that, is that entire the, the plaza, the entry part outside of the vestib, uh, outside of the entry plaza?
Yes.
Where the medallion is, is that in a different pattern, because it's a different material? Like, is it paved?
That we would have different kinds of pavers from the outside versus the inside.
So, is that, is that a fundraising opportunity for us? To get people to sponsor pavers, put their names on them, and now we can bring money in for the park? Say, to decorate it with art, or to decorate it with artistic features, or to, I don't know, add sprinklers, or whatever?
Yeah.
I, I think we should really maximize, because it also brings community in. I know that Veterans Plaza and Rotary did, you know, funded most of that. They went out to the community, and they just got tons of money from residents that wanted their names on a brick. And it's just really cool.
Yeah, we can do this. I know in, in Capitola, the, um, the wall at the beach has tiles that families have done. There's memorial there. Yeah, and so they do them at places, but you're like looking at them, and it's an opportunity to put your family's name in there. What I liked about the ones like at Capitola that I saw, that were different than a lot of places, they weren't all memorial. They weren't all in memory of. These were like, you know, the, you know, Smith family, and they did their little design that was whatever. And so, it could, I think it might be kinda fun if we even had a tile wall or something, you know, that paw prints, or paw prints, something that would be really cute, you know? And it could be memorial to people's pets, if they wanted to do a brick, and they had a print, you know, that they wanna do. But that would be great, is to have a, to build this as a community. And people have ownership in it, too. So, they took pride in it.
We can still wax to the benches, too.
We could. And, you know, we have a bench.
You can even, you can even extend it.
We have a bench thing that our art people probably don't know anything about.
Ooh, that's thing.
Yeah, well, you can, you can.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that walkway could be extended all the way up north, too. I mean, you, you could really go to town with that, and that really gets a lot of community participation and buy-in. You know, I don't know what the fence is gonna be made of that goes to the generator, but if you turn that into an opaque wall, you could also hang tiles there. You know, and there's all kinds of cool stuff you could do to make that pathway more amenable and, and to block noise. I don't know what the requirements are there, but that was the last thing. It's, I guess it's outside the purview of the specific dog park, but it's, I feel like there's a way to just expand community involvement and the beauty of the surrounding access points to the park. Okay, so, did you get notes?
We've got comments.
The only thing where we have a little bit of disagreement, the tiny bit, is on the water, the bath.
Well, we have all the comments.
They'll all be in one document together.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to word it, so it's all. So it's all.
Thank you.
And report.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's lovely. And I, you know, I can see that you incorporated what people were saying and talking about. And it's really nice. And you kept sort of an organic feel to it despite turf.
No, it will be clean.
Yeah, exactly.
But sure, do you want to ask?
Yes, I was just staring at it, enjoying it. Sorry. Let me get back to the business here. All right, so you have the comments. Now we're going to move on to informational items.
No, no, I'm sorry. If, if we could just at least request if there's any interest in making a recommendation to council.
Oh, that's right.
But there's no recommendation by the commission.
Yeah, so between the two designs, I personally would be interested in having a, to make, have this commission pick one or to be neutral, whatever the motion might be. But we should, I think we should make our opinion or overall opinion known to the council between the two designs.
Can you show the other one again?
Nope, I went the wrong way.
You're looking at the single space with one off leash.
Right, it's the B design. That's the B design.
Just imagine a fence down the middle. Do, do you want the park separated or not? Small dog, all dog, or do you want it all just one park?
Yeah, so. I would propose, can I take a straw poll, please, right now? Just how you feel between the two? The preferred plan, which is a divided park, or the B plan, which is a non-divided park between the dog sizes? So who is, who are in favor, who's in favor of the preferred plan? Which is the divided, it has the fence there between the large and small? One, two, three, four, five. Who, so if that's what you prefer, now let me ask a different question. Actually, let's leave it at that.
It's five.
Five.
People said they.
Did anybody, did you get a feel from?
I, I have no, um, I, I could go either way.
Yeah, and the reality is I could.
I mean, I could be neutral too.
Yeah.
I think in terms of the community, I think there was enough of an outcry for divided park.
Yeah. That that's where we should go.
I just don't love a small dog. I feel like people with smaller dogs have a different viewpoint. So I want to respect what the majority wants, yeah.
Okay, listen to. So, um, does somebody want to make a motion?
All that we recommended the council to move forward with the master plan concept with the divided park.
And Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Forgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Porter?
Yes.
And Chair Valdez.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Good, good presentation. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Very nice. Nice planning.
Thank you.
All that hard work.
Hi.
Thank you. All right, informational items.
A few things from staff here is, one, the summer concert, I believe the flyer is included.
The updated flyer.
Yeah, the updated flyer is in the packet. So we've already started the concerts. From what we're hearing, we've had two concerts. One of them is actually sponsored by, but not run by City Stop. And that was the Peninsula Symphony. And that was, I believe at Grant Park?
Yeah.
Yes.
Was it Grant Park? Yeah. And from what we're hearing, they got like 700 people.
Yeah.
That was ridiculous. I don't know how 700 people fit on a soccer field, but they got it. So, so that sounded great. So we're, we're real proud to sponsor them to run that, that concert. Our first concert that was done in-house was at Grant Park this last Thursday. And we're estimating at least 500 people attended. So, and, and my observation, because I, I showed up for a while, is that's more, there was a lot of people dancing. There'd been 100 of them.
Yeah, it was the Steely Dan.
Yeah, Steely Dan, yeah, that's a pretty, pretty solid movie. Yeah, Steely Dan and Chicago. Yeah, so our, our next concert is?
The 20th, and it is Groove Foundation, Top 40 R&B Funk and Rock.
You can go be some serious dance.
That will be at Grant.
That will be a thing.
We got a couple more at Grant and then we'll come to Hillview for a couple of things. All right, so, and then the next event that's coming up is actually after our, after our Juneteenth observed holiday here with the city, the Juneteenth event will be this Saturday, right here in the soccer field area of Hillview. So, so yeah, you can go on the Juneteenth site. I believe we've included the flyer on, in the packet as well. So you can go on the Juneteenth site and just reserve your, I believe they're free tickets. So, but they just like to get a count. I've asked them to do the same. So, so it'll help us to count people that attend. So it should, should be a good thing. So take a look at that if you have a chance. And then one other update that's not listed, I do want to mention to you, is we've reached out to the artist already that was selected for the Steps Call for Art. And fortunately, if you know, our deputy director, Jamie Chu, she, uh, she came from Milpitas. And she has actually worked with this artist in the past. He's really good to work with. And he has already committed to coming to the August meeting.
Perfect.
So, yeah, so we'll, we, we got him. I went ahead and gave him the dates and he said, yes, he'll, he'll be here. Whether it's virtual or not, I'm not sure. But Jamie said, yeah, Jamie said he will attend in some form to the August meeting. So then we can give him all that information and then he can come up with a plan based on what this commission wants to give him. So I just wanted to give you that. I thought that was a real positive update we just got today.
That's awesome.
So, and I think that's all I have. Oh, that's right. We won't have a lady by last. Yes, the glorious fourth. The glorious fourth is on the fourth and it will be down at Shaw Park. And for those who have attended in the past, whether it was run by the city or run by the previous organization that ran it, which was the Community Foundation, it's, it's basically the same format. We should have the, what band was that again? I can't. Old Town, Old Town? Yeah, the Old Town, there you go. The Old Town Band is going to be out there playing some, some very village style Fourth of July festivities that go on, face painting, stuff like that. So, so yeah, so we encourage everyone to join. That's a glorious fourth and that's put on by Parks and Land. Thank you.
I just have one to add on to that, Manny. Can you explain, or do we have to? Uh, explaining how volunteering works for park? Because I know there's a background check and for the Fourth of July. So there was a call for volunteers, but you think you have to background check for that?
Yeah.
Can you explain?
I'm not sure who's, who's handling volunteers. Bridgette is? Okay, so, yeah, if you, if you're interested in volunteering or anybody who sees this video live or recording, if you're interested in volunteering for any of our events, please contact Bridgette and she will talk, talk you through the process. And there is a background check, definitely, depending on what you do, whether it's live scan or just.
So even like showing up at the concert, you need to have background check?
Or volunteer, no, if you're volunteering to run the, the events. So if you're volunteering with us, not showing up, especially for the commission. I don't think that's an issue.
If you're at any event.
If you're going with the city as an employee assistant, being a volunteer in some form, we just want to check you on the background. That's all.
When we did the, when we volunteered at the.
I had a background check. I had a background checker.
It's funny, I did the movies and everything.
Once again, that, that's a little bit different because it's a commissioner-driven event, especially with the movies and stuff.
Okay.
So the commission, go ahead and does that. But when you're interacting with, with certain patrons on your own or with children, there's usually just a background check. So it's, it's, it's a very simple process depending on which version you're going. But just wanted to tell you, if you're interested in volunteering, contact Bridgette. She'll walk you through it.
Okay. So that.
Because you can't all of a sudden show up and say, I want to volunteer. You have to plan ahead with park events.
Okay.
And we need.
All right, any, anybody want to give any, any update? Any oral report, so to speak?
No, I'm probably going to attend virtually in August. I'll be out of town. So I'll let you know that now. And I guess I have to give you an address where I'll be.
Okay.
Okay, I'll get you to, back to you, Casey.
Um, do we have to, so, uh, the, uh, the, the selected artist coming to the August meeting, that'll just become part of the agenda then?
Okay. Definitely, the brochure, Janet, you brought up a good point. And there obviously is going to be a charge by the artist to revise it. I don't think we vote, did we vote on like spending up to a certain amount? Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe so. We'll, we'll, that will evaluate based on the budget that's been set aside for the current fiscal year. But yeah, let, let's just see what the proposal is.
Okay, I mean, I don't think it's.
Other proposals?
Yeah. Well.
Let's see. Shouldn't be an issue there.
Okay, well, I mean, I don't know if we would get other proposals really because it's like an artist, it's like an existing work.
I don't know. That's what I'm saying. We don't know. But if it's coming in at 30,000.
I, I, no.
We might want to get a second proposal.
I'm thinking like hundreds, maybe even, okay.
I don't think it's an issue.
Yeah, okay, great.
And to kind of piggyback on as far as the budget goes, I'm still waiting for the updated version of, actually, I have the updated version. I just received the updated version of the proposals for those two art pieces. I believe in Lincoln Park that were scheduled under the last proposal from the Conservatory of Art, I forgot what food that was. Repairs the art.
Right.
Uh, yeah, so, and those were, those prices have gone up since the initial proposal. So I will bring back to the commission to see if they want to do both of those. And I'll talk to you more about that when that comes back in August.
Can you tell about those pieces that have, the loans have already expired?
Uh, no, no, I have, I have not yet. So I'll, I'll have to talk on that. We'll see what we want to do. You're going to see that. Because if the loans expire, in speaking with John Maginot, it's, it's one of two things, either extend the loan, but I don't know if the commission's interested in that, or purchase the piece. Sometimes, which you've seen probably holes where the art used to be, sometimes the artist will say, that's it, loan's up, let's go. And take, we take it. I think we just recently expired that at the first chance.
Yeah.
So, so yeah, they told me a week ahead and said, we're coming to get it. But we'll have to make the decision on those arts once we organize all that information. Okay, you'll see it though.
Great. Um, but I would like to make an update. I attended the city council meeting, a recent city council meeting where various nonprofit organizations went and petitioned for grants from the city council. And it was a very interesting meeting. I don't know if any of you have watched it.
I watched it on video. No, I watched it in person.
Oh, you were there.
No, I wasn't there. I was online live. Live, you watched it live. I watched it live.
Live, but via, via online, okay? Because I didn't remember seeing you there, okay? Um, you would agree that it was interesting. It was interesting for a variety of reasons.
I don't have a better word for it.
With regard to this commission, there were some statements that were made. And I'm going, I'm paraphrasing, so I'm not in any way quoting. I suggest that you folks watch that portion of the meeting because to me, there was some sense of, let me be specific. Arts Los Altos asked for a grant. And they asked for 15,000. They ended up getting 10. So they got a reduced amount. But the, that wasn't what bothered me. What bothered me was that there, there seemed to be some comments coming from council. And I won't identify who, I'll let you guys watch the video, that gave an impression that perhaps we are not being as collaborative as we should be with that organization.
Accurate.
Would you agree?
Accurate.
Okay, so I want to, I want to, I don't know if this needs to become an agenda item or a discussion because number one, I don't want this commission to be not moving expectations. But number two, I want to know explicitly what the expectations are. And so I don't know if Sally is on, is Sally on? Okay, so I, I think it's something that either I can meet with Sally and try to get clarification, or we can make it a, a park discussion. Because, you know, I want to understand what the city council expects of us with regard to collaborations in general and then collaboration specifically with Arts Los Altos. And then I want to understand precisely what our purview is, our charter, you know, in the sense that, for example, we're going to make a brochure. But we are not going to have any public art that's on private property in that brochure, correct? So if the city council is expecting our brochure to be comprehensive, we're not going to meet that expectation. So I want to be very clear with our commission in terms of what the council expects. Can you answer that question?
No.
Okay, so we need to ask.
Look, what I, what I can say though is you and I should talk about exactly what is, what would be the path we take to answer those questions.
Right.
And so, so with that, I think we can talk and then talk to Sally.
Okay, great.
So you.
Right, because I, you know, I was not in a position to say anything because my public comment time was over. Had I known that, that sentiment was going to be expressed, I would have made a public comment. Now, I'm being very neutral here. I'm not in favor of or against collaboration. I just want to make sure I know what the expectations are upon this commission. So that's where my motivation is, okay? It could be another topic, you know, same thing. I want to understand exactly what our purview is, what's the scope of our charter, and then what are the expectations? So that, I just wanted to bring that. I would really advise you all to watch that portion of the city council meeting to, so that you're not relying on my paraphrasing, but that, you know, you actually hear it for yourself. Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Thanks for bringing that.
All right. Any requests for future agenda items? Yes?
I think our resident, Jim, has been here a number of times and talks about redwood growth. And so I think it would be good to agendaize the requests about the sheds to discuss them. Or Manny, if you have?
I, I'll, I'll work with the chair to talk about possible agenda item if needed. I, I need to, this is actually, other than the email that the chair sent me on it, was the first time I heard that that shed wasn't being used. So I, I still need to evaluate it from a staff perspective because it may be just an operational thing.
He made, he made it clear that, and I know that, because I work with grassroots ecology, they are using it to store their materials.
And that's what I need to find out. I don't know, I don't know the extent of it. So let me, let me find out. I still need to look more into that.
Okay, so maybe for future.
Future, then I'll write it down.
If we need it.
If we need it, we'll work on it.
Let's talk about that.
And I would.
And then, okay.
You have, you have a second person supporting it.
Okay, great, thank you. And then the other thing is our other resident speaker about the, um, the orchard. It brings up a good question. So is there a way for us to get a report or a better understanding of the orchard? And where the parameters of the orchard are, what our purview is for that? And then to kind of get an idea of what is going on? And is there a way we can make the changes that are being made, like specifically to Lacy, maybe more attractive? So that it isn't fencing that is just fencing around the HVAC and stuff? Where we could actually have it be something that maybe works better in that orchard area? So, you know, can we have a conversation about that? Can we bring that in as a future agenda item?
We'll have the chair to talk about.
Couldn't we get a presentation?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it was just the information that we provide or a presentation or something. Definitely that project is outside of this commission's purview.
I know that.
But let's see where, where it does affect anything that may be within this commission's.
And you know, that idea of like collaboratively working with groups, maybe we can collaboratively work in a way that's going to make that, you know, area pop differently? Because there was some artwork that was supposed to go on that building and it's not going to go on that building. So maybe there's a way we can still put it on that building. And then, you know, since we're doing the call to art for the stairs, I mean, there may be a way that we can help.
I'll work with the chair to see what topics we can bring as agenda items to help.
Clarify, just for my own edification, make sure I'm understanding. When you say that is not in our purview.
I said that project.
And that project is.
No, I feel should Lacy, City Hall, Lacy St.
I thought what you, I thought what you were talking about, excuse me, I can't remember making a comment right now. But I thought what you were talking about is the orchard, not the Lacy building.
Well, I'd like to know, you know, what is going on over there? What it belongs to us as a commission to help with? And then can we help?
And we can.
He gets it, I think. And then also talk about the Lacy building and can we do something that makes that look a little bit better? Incorporate art. And then on that same thing, how to protect the artwork that we have as you construct. So, because we do have that precious little dog over there. It is precious to a lot of people. Been around a long time.
All right. Anybody else? I'm not hearing none. We're adjourned. Okay. Thank you for everybody's.
Thank you for the presentation.
Nine oh five, yeah.